Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Toledo, here.
Cahill.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Park. Absent, Hanquist.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Mulliter.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Beremis.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn. Absent, Hill. Absent, Palmsky.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Eleven present, three absent.
Eleven present, three absent. We have a quorum. Item two, presentations, 2.1. Officer Bishop, if you and your family want to join me right here in the center. Okay, well, this is a very important evening for us. We have a promotion. I think it's been the first in my tenure. Doesn't reflect poorly on me.
(laughing).
So, we are going to be doing the promotion of Dan Bishop to the rank of Sergeant. So, you want to tell us who you have with you tonight to help celebrate this?
Sure. I have my son Liam, my daughter Maddie, and my wife Natalie.
Very good. All right, you guys ready? All right, raise your right hand. I, Dan Bishop.
I, Dan Bishop.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Charter and the Charter laws of and ordinances of the City of Elmhurst.
The Charter laws of Elmhurst.
And that I will discharge the office of Sergeant.
That I will discharge the office of Sergeant.
To the best of my abilities. You are the Sergeant. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Could I ask the fellow officers if you would come up and line up behind our new Sergeant for a group picture? You can keep your family up here, and we'll put you here in the middle.
Is this me?
Yeah.
Okay. This explains why I'm parking right here.
Are we ready?
Already ready.
Early up, man.
All right, we got one last thing we have to ask you to do. You guys can come on down.
(applause).
The City Council would like to personally thank you, so Sergeant, if you'll start over here, watch your step, going up and down.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, this week also marks National Police Week. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15 falls is National Police Officer Week. And we pay special recognition to all of the law enforcement officers who lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And on behalf of the City Council and the residents, I also want to express our sincere appreciation for all of the members of the Elmhurst Police Department, those who are here, and others, the service and sacrifice that our public safety officers have committed to our community can't be underestimated. We're blessed to live in a community that supports our first responders, and I think for those of you who have had the opportunity, you've heard our council members speak of our admiration and support for our police department. We constantly analyze and prioritize bringing to our community the highest level of public safety services, and I can assure you that the fine men and women who serve in our police department provide us with outstanding public safety. So, this is a very momentous occasion for the Sergeant, but as long as you're here, and it's National Police Week, we thought we would say thank you to all of you, and that concludes the police portion of our program, so. We have another proclamation. If you guys want to stay, you can. If you want to go out and socialize, you can do that, but if you do want to leave, this would be the time. Otherwise, we're going to move on to another important recognition, and that is 100 Women Who Care. Do we have a couple of representatives who will be joining me for this?
A few.
A few? All right, bring them all up. We'll come right over here.
Hello, Scott, how are you? Where do you want us?
Well, we could do it. Well, why don't you start over here so the council can see you, and then we'll do a picture up there.
Okay.
All right, and I think I know 90% of the 100 Women Who Care, so.
(laughing).
And one man. All right. So, I'm pleased to present this proclamation, and I'd like to read it for the benefit of the women who are here and for the people in the audience in the City Council. Whereas 100-plus Women Who Care Elmhurst area was established in November 2013 by five Elmhurst women, Betsy Aldred, Amy Allen, Jean Carlquist, who's here, Marta Davey, Charlotte Mushaw, who's here, and as a local giving circle dedicated to making an impact in Elmhurst and surrounding communities. And whereas this chapter is part of the 100 Who Care Alliance, a global network of more than 700 active giving circles dedicating to making a difference in their communities, and whereas 121 dynamic and philanthropic women gathered at its first meeting in November 2013 to enthusiastically launch the group, and whereas the members participate in the collaborative giving process four times a year, each making an individual $100 contribution that results in a collective donation to a nonprofit, and whereas 100-plus Women Who Care Elmhurst area is dedicated to its mission welcoming of new members and committed to continuing as a positive movement in Elmhurst and the surrounding area, and whereas 102 presentations from leading nonprofits have been shared with the group, informing the members of needs in the community and igniting a passionate response, and whereas as of the date of this proclamation and as a result of the generous giving of its members, 100 Women, 100-plus Women Who Care Elmhurst area has donated more than $500,000. To 31 unique nonprofits directly impacting Elmhurst and surrounding communities. Now, therefore, I, Scott M. Levin, Mayor of the City of Elmhurst with great pride, do hereby proclaim May 16, 2022, as 100-plus Women Who Care Day.
Yes.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you to this wonderful community. We've enjoyed our role in giving back to the Elmhurst community, and I just can't say enough about this amazing group of women, but even more so to those people who are dedicated to serving others through their own nonprofits in the community. So, it's our pleasure to be here tonight. Thanks, Scott.
(applause).
Of course, all of us.
Watch your step.
Aren't you going to be in the picture with us?
I'll be in the picture.
You're going to be our talking man.
100 Women Who Care.
120.
I'm going to have to prepare. I don't know what to say, Scott.
(laughing).
Want to come over here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I get some people over here? Please come over here, okay?
There's so many high, they won't get there.
So excited, I know, I'm tired.
That's okay.
Thank you.
And they would like you to know that there are 100-plus cookies for the City Council
after the meeting. All right, so more to celebrate tonight. We are going to recognize the Public Works Citizen Academy participants, and this is the inaugural graduating class Public Works Director. Stan, you want to come up and?
Thank you, City Council, for giving us a few moments this evening. So, we just concluded our first Public Works Citizens Academy with our graduation ceremony for our participants in a meeting before tonight's City Council meeting, and one of our goals for this year in Public Works was to establish this Public Works Citizen Academy to continue to enhance our residents' understanding and awareness of what we do in Public Works, as well as the value that it adds to the community. We've been excited to tell our story, not just of what we do, but also how we do it and why we do it. And we did this by including a hands-on element or demonstration of a Public Works activity most evenings, so it was more than just a lecture. The academy included five evening sessions that began in mid-April and that looked at all the various aspects of the department. We tackled everything from budgets and administration to capital projects one evening, focused another night on underground utilities, had another night where we toured the city's water reclamation facility. We also spent a night talking about Public Works operations, everything from forestry to street maintenance and electrical, facilities, fleet. And our last week, we were fortunate enough to have our museum director, Dave Oberg, come in and deliver a presentation on the history of Public Works in the City of Elmhurst, which was really fascinating. So, these five sessions, as I mentioned, have culminated in the graduation of our inaugural class during National Public Works Week, which also happens to be this week. At this point, I would like to recognize our graduating class by reading their names. So, we have many of them in attendance here at the meeting tonight, not necessarily everyone, but many. David Anderson, Gail Anderson, Mike McCauley, Krista Woski, Julie Gatesman, Phil Murray, Daniel Maziarz, Randy Remarzik, John Storak, Brian DeBoscher, Ardell Kidwell, Stephen Cook, Sarah Krupf, Julie McConnell, Russell McConnell, Tom Wiseman, Robert Gifford, Eva Sanchez, Grayson Haller, Pete Ramirez, and Donald Wilkie. We've had a great time with this group of residents that have chosen to join us for the past five weeks. We really appreciate their interest and the dialogue that we've been able to have with them about Public Works. I think that's been one of the most, I think, beneficial things of doing this, is that it's been really a two-way street of a conversation with them. They've asked a ton of great questions, and we've gotten to know each other in that process. And in closing, I would just really like to thank all of our staff that were such a big part of making this happen, especially our assistant director, Corey Taberry, our utility operations manager, Paul Burris, city engineer, Ken Johnson, and our communications manager, Cassandra Schreff. Without them, we would not have been able to accomplish this. So, I thank you for your time.
You know, a couple things. One is, this is something that you took on. We didn't know how it was going to turn out. We were in there for the last part of the graduation, and for the couple aldermen that were in with me to see the graduation, I could see the enthusiasm that people brought to this graduation ceremony. So, I thank you for that, and of course, this is National Public Works Week, so our hard-working Public Works team is always ready to serve the community and highly creative and skilled at what they do. So, it is fitting tonight that we recognize the first Elmhurst Public Works Academy graduates who had a chance to discover the ins and outs of what Public Works Department does on a daily basis. And we are going to have another ceremony in a moment that will highlight some of the great things that are happening in our Public Works, but thanks, Stan.
Thank you.
All right. Stan, you might want to stand up for this one, or Paul, we've got a couple more, and I think we've got some people from the Illinois Chapter of the American Waterworks Association, Annie Story, Brian Jack, and Randy Lusk.
All right, so we're going to hear from Randy Lusk first. Randy. Good evening. Usually, I don't need this, so I apologize if it's too loud. I am the current past chair for the Illinois Section AWWA, and there are 43 sections that make up AWWA, and Illinois Section is one of those. So, I just want to give you a little history. AWWA has around 50,000 members in North America, and it was established in 1881. Illinois Section has around 2,500 members. It is the fourth-largest section in AWWA, and it was founded in 1909. So, our mission as a section is to provide the resources for the advocacy of safe and sustainable water through membership, mentoring, and public awareness. And public awareness is how this award that Brian is going to go over started, with one of our mission goals. Brian?
Thank you, Randy. So, as Randy said, one of our main objectives of the Illinois Section is to promote public awareness and public education of the water and wastewater field. It's more than just turning on your faucet, and the water comes out, and you flush your toilet, and the water goes down. There's a lot more that goes into it to get that to happen, so it's a very safe and reliable source of water. So, the Water Ambassador Program is, it's an award that nine communities within Illinois achieved this award this past year. This is the first year that we've done it, and all nine communities achieved the gold standard, which there's three standards, bronze, silver, and gold. It's, Paul and the City of Elmhurst achieved the gold standard for this year, so we're very proud of Paul and the City of Elmhurst. And basically, what the program is, is promoting public awareness, educating the public the value of water through social media posts, Public Works Citizen Academy, like you guys just completed today, that's a big part of it, educating our public officials, as well as the general public as well. So, with that, each community gets a street sign to hang up in your community so everybody can see that you're a gold standard, and then we have a small gold-plated, not really, but gold-painted frame with the award that Paul can hang up in his office. So, with this, we like to, as behalf of the Illinois Section, we'd like to congratulate Paul and the City of Elmhurst for achieving this.
Okay, so on behalf of the City Council and all our residents, I want to sincerely thank our Public Works Department, led by Stan Balicki and his superior management team, including Paul Burris. From clean water to maintaining our streets and a wide range of infrastructure projects, this is a team that points on point with all the needs of the community, and I'm sure this is a very well-deserved award. Thank you, guys, for coming out. Congratulations to you, guys.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want an award? All right. Item three, receipt of written communications from the public. Clerk Tamer, have you received any written communications?
No, Mayor.
All right, is there anyone here tonight that would like to deliver a written communication to the City Council? If so, please raise your hand. There being none, we'll move on to item four, public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor. We have Kim Messina.
All right, Ms. Messina, if you'd use the microphone to the rear there, and you have three minutes, you please state your name. Address is optional.
My name is Kim Messina, and I just wanted to say thank you to the Mayor and the Public Affairs and Safety Committee for supporting the need of a walking and biking working group made up of representatives from the community to assist with the implementations of the approved pedestrian bicycle plan. This group will make suggestions from this approved plan to make the community safer to walk and bike in our neighborhoods, improving the quality of life on many levels for all of Elmhurst. And I just wanted to add, May is National Bicycle Safety Month, so a little late to prepare events, although Sunday is a great event that we are going to participate in. I believe the police are putting together, but this is only the beginning of making Elmhurst a safer place to walk and enjoy the neighborhood safely, because there will be more awareness on safety and sharing the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Armalene Moretti.
Please state your name and address, optional.
My name is Armalene Moretti. I live in Elmhurst. I asked the City Council to please approve the creation of a walk-bike working group for the city. This group would be made up of community volunteers interested in the implementation of the pedestrian bike plan in a way that engages the entire community. This group, if approved, could work with events in our business communities that promote alternative modes of transportation to attend them. It could work with the school district to teach basic ways to be safe while walking and biking in the community that can be expanded all the way through high school, which will make our students safer and better educated drivers. When people feel safer walking and biking, they do more of it, which increases foot traffic on our streets, and that includes our stores. This increased foot traffic leads to increased dollars being spent in those stores. Less motorized vehicles on our streets decreases pollution and makes the community healthier and greener. I truly hope each council member will vote yes to the creation of this group, and thank you so much for your consideration. And thank you so much, Mayor Levine, and the Public Affairs and Safety Committee for listening to us, for Kim and I. I promise, Mayor Levine, I won't accost you anymore in Costco. You're safe to go there.
Thank you.
We really appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer, any other?
That's it, Mayor.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience who did not have the time or opportunity to sign in for a public comment that would like to make comment? If so, raise your hand. All right, there being none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove from it so that they may either have more discussion or vote against it? Alderman Nudera.
I'd like to pull 5.28.
All right, anything else? All right, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 5.28? Alderman Hanquist with a motion. Alderman Brennan with a second. Clerk Tamer, would you please read the consent agenda?
5.1, minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on May 2, 2022. 5.2, accounts payable, May 16, 2022, total $3,597,740.95. 5.3, referral, managing distribution center developments in the industrial districts. 5.5, reappointment to the Architectural and Building Commission, Bebe and Budgel. 5.5, appointment to the Economic Development Commission, Donlenger, Gee, and Metting. 5.6, reappointment to the Public Arts Commission, Evans, Lee, and Miller. 5.7, reappointment to the Senior Commission, Forbush, Wood, Heller, Maple, and Lo Cicero. 5.8, reappointment to the Zoning and Planning Commission, Hoffman and Snyder. 5.9, report, case number 22P07, Kruger Steel and Wire, PUD 900 North Industrial Drive. 5.10, report, case number 21P11, Ryan Company's Conditional Use Permit for a Plan Unit Development Allowances and Platt of Subdivision. 5.11, report, Elmhurst City Center, 2022 Rock the Block. 5.12, report, Elmhurst City Center, 2022 Beautiful Saturday. 5.13, report, Police Officer Lateral Hiring Program. 5.14, report, Rock Salt Contract for 2022 and 2023 Winter Season. 5.15, report, LED Streetlight Purchase. 5.16, report, intergovernmental agreement with Illinois State Toll Highway Authority and the City of Elmhurst, County Line Road and Valette Street. 5.17, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between 1911 Club Inc. and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. 5.18, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the execution of a contract for ditch cleaning services at the north property line of 933 South Riverside Drive in the City of Elmhurst. 5.19, an ordinance to approve and accept the quitclaim deed from the State of Illinois Department of Natural Resources Office of Water Resources for the real estate commonly known as Arlington Cemetery Reservoir. 5.20, a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Konica Minolta Business Solutions for the purchase and maintenance of 14 multifunctional digital copiers. 5.21, a resolution authorizing the purchase of Veltman Anodized Aluminum Streetlight Poles for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 5.22, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the 2022 Streetlight Pole Painting Project, project number 22-28. 5.23, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the custodial maintenance of various municipal buildings, project number 22-07. 5.24, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the Van Buren Street and Crescent Avenue Reconstruction Improvements Project, project 21-43 for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 5.25, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional construction engineering services agreement by and between Clark Deeds Inc. and the City of Elmhurst for the First Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. 5.26, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional design and engineering services agreement by and between Clark Deeds, Inc., and the City of Elmhurst for the Lake Street Water Main Improvements Project. And 5.27, a resolution authorizing the purchase of flushing and sampling station materials, project 22 through 33 for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois.
All right. We have a motion, and we've read the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Udera?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn is absent. Hill is absent. Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays, 2 absent.
12 ayes, 0 nays, 2 absent. The consent agenda minus item 5.28 is adopted. I used to think it might have been a lot of time for this, but I guess people who are watching can see how much work is actually done by our council. Let's move on to 528. Clerk Tamer, would you read the resolution, please?
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional design engineering services agreement by and between the City of Elmhurst and Civil Tech Engineering, Inc., for the Bike and Pedestrian Improvements Project Phase One.
I can have a motion to put this before council. Alderman Brennan, second Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. The ordinance before us is for engineering design for six of 19 potential bike and pedestrian improvement projects. With that, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you. Discussion? Alderman Udera.
Yes, I wanted to address this. I will support this resolution, but need to express my deepest concern with the design and implementation of project number four, which happens to be Spring Road between St. Charles and Valette. With the daily probability of heavy motorized and pedestrian traffic to and from York High School, alongside an athletic field during practices and events, buses unloading and loading passengers, and a school with an overflow of cars, add drop-off and pickup times, along with a railroad crossing and between parallel parked cars along a business district, a shared bike lane may be more challenging than we think for all involved, the cyclists, motorists, and the pedestrian. Therefore, I have reservations towards the project, and that's being project four, and would hope to have further discussions to the public safety at this site.
Thank you, Alderman Udera. Any other discussion? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, I appreciate and respect Alderman Udera's concerns, and hopefully during this phase of the project that we can look at those concerns and see if something can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Udera?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye. He's out of the game.
You can't see the name tags, you're Brennan. Okay.
Okay, so Mulliner, aye, okay. Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn? Absent. Hill? Absent. Palomsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent. Item 5.28, resolution 5.28 passes. On to committee reports. 6.1, Clerk Tamer, please read the title of the report.
Do you want me to read the recommendation?
Yeah, recommendation, thank you.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve the redevelopment agreement as presented. In addition, the committee recommends that the City Council suspend the rules to allow the report and ordinance to be approved at the same meeting. The City Attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed, Danny Palomsky, Chair, Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chair, and Emily Bastido, Alderwoman, Ward Six.
I could have a motion for item 6.1. Alderman Palomsky, second Alderman Mulliner, Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the residents, staff, and fellow elected officials for the time and attention to this project. Bringing maximum value to a parcel is the objective of developing to highest and best use. Seeking highest and best use is the foundation of all development within the city, within or outside of the planned unit development process. In the case with the Ryan Companies' project, just like we saw with the FFC development, the existing use of a surface parking lot is not highest and best use. While this council unanimously approved and advanced the preliminary planned unit development permit for the Ryan Companies' project, we have yet to take action on a component essential to achieving highest and best use, the conveyance of 108 Haven. To convey the city parcel and to augment the planned unit development process, before us is the DPNZ report recommending a redevelopment agreement between Ryan Companies and the City of Elmhurst. The redevelopment agreement includes the following: purchase price of $535,000. Ryan Companies shall pay the city and all third-party permit fees. Two cement panels on the east facade will be replaced with two brick panels consistent in square footage, style, and material as the west side facade. The project now incorporates additional brick and design elements on the east, west, and south sides. The property is being conveyed and accepted as-is. If within 365 days following the conveyance by the City of 108 Haven, the developer has not begun construction of structural improvements, the city has the right to have the property returned for the sum of $535,000. Just as we did recently when the Elmhurst Clinic was rebuilt, and under that construction, the city will provide 81 parking spaces for the Elmhurst Clinic employees in the downtown area during the construction, and that will be checked up, assuming it would last 24 months. This project reflects the intent of the downtown plan, projects the voices of the neighbors, highlights the responsiveness of the developer, and will introduce the city's stricter construction management standards. I ask the council for their support.
Thank you, Chair Palomsky. Additional comment? All right, there being, Alderman Toledo.
I thought maybe someone else might want to go before me, so I want to echo the thanks that Alderman Palomsky gave both to the residents of the City of Elmhurst, in particular to many of the Fourth Ward residents that were very involved in this project from the get-go, as well as the Zoning and Planning Commission, and the DPNZ committee, and staff, and everyone that put time into this project over the course of the last year. I believe that this is a good project for Elmhurst. It continues to enhance the vitality and the hope for our community, especially for downtown and city center. It has significant benefits, not only in the terms of the price that we're getting for the sale of a city-owned piece of property, but the future improvement to the property tax base for the city. As we all know, that benefits residents by helping to spread out costs among more people. I also want to speak a little bit about the success of the process, the respectful engagement of residents, staff, attorneys, the developer. I think that this final project really is a better project than what we first were presented. I think that it responded to many of the concerns of not only very close neighbors to the project, but to residents of the city even further afield. For example, the bulk was moved to the west from the original design. Alderman Palomsky mentioned the added brick, both on the west, the south, and the east side, as well as fully encompassing the two tower projections with brick. Significant landscaping plans to help bring, ease the project into the neighborhood area. Ride-share and package-delivery contemplation, as that is becoming more and more demanding in our downtown, will not have an increase on stormwater. And overall, the color and the aesthetic and the materials in this final design are improved compared to where we started, and I think many residents feel that they are more in line with the Elmhurst aesthetic. So, for all of those reasons, I want to thank everybody involved in the process and look forward to supporting this project and seeing it built in the next year or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Any additional discussion? There being none, Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Toledo.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn, absent, Hill, absent, Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent. Report 6.1 is adopted. 6.2, would you read the?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the City Council approve the creation of the walking and biking working group appointed by the Mayor of the City of Elmhurst and direct city staff to initiate a public request for applications. Signed, Marty Deuter, Chair, Jacob Hill, Vice Chair, James Nudera, Fifth Ward.
I think you can have a motion to put 6.2 before the council. Alderman Deuter, second Alderman Nudera, Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. This council has focused on a number of initiatives designed to make our streets safer for pedestrians, bikers, and drivers. Last November, the city adopted a more comprehensive approach to address speeding. We purchased new equipment to collect speed and traffic volume data, and with the help of two summer interns, city staff will have a more consistent and coordinated response to complaints, with more communication back to residents. In April, we approved the first of what we hope will be a series of neighborhood traffic studies that will proactively study traffic concerns at the neighborhood level, rather than intersection by intersection as complaints are received. Other communities that have taken this approach have seen reductions in traffic accidents, speeding enforcement actions, and resident complaints. At our last council meeting, we approved a report to complete the engineering design of the first set of projects in the city's bike and pedestrian plan that was adopted last year. The report before you tonight is also related to the city's bike and pedestrian plan, and we heard a little bit about this report during public comment earlier this evening. Acting on a referral from Mayor Levin, and Alderman Brennan, and Dunn, and me, the Public Affairs and Safety Committee is recommending that the City Council approve the creation of the walking and biking working group. As discussed by the committee and consistent with the Bike and Ped Plan recommendations, the proposed working group would build relationships with local groups and institutions to offer consistent, year-round education and activities that encourage walking and biking. The group may also help identify grant opportunities and support funding applications. A more detailed list of the group's potential activities is included in the report. We expect the group will have approximately 15 members that will be appointed by Mayor Levin following a public request for applications. We hope to find hard-working and highly enthusiastic participants who will represent key stakeholder groups throughout our community. I'd like to thank everyone who played a role in the development of our Bike and Ped Plan, and I want to give a special thanks to Armalene Moretti and Kim Messina, who first raised the possibility of an advisory group with Mayor Levin and provided input along the way. This report furthers the city's focus on safety for pedestrian, bikers, and drivers. We know increased walking and biking has health, environmental, and economic benefits, and can reduce traffic congestion. I'm excited about the potential for this group to have a notable positive impact on our community, and I ask for your support.
Thank you, Alderman Deuter. Additional discussion? All right, I will ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Toledo.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn and Hill are absent, Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent. The report is adopted, and I also want to thank you, Chair Brennan, Deuter, for your leadership in helping write up the referral and keeping this moving, so I don't want to let your significant contributions to go unnoticed. Thank you. Item seven, ordinances. 7.1, Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving a final planned unit development with site development allowances for the construction of a multifamily residential apartment building at the property commonly known as 102-138 North Haven Road, Elmhurst, Illinois. See item 5.10.
All right, can I have a motion to put 7.1 before the council? Alderman Palomsky, second Alderman Mulliner, Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance that accompanies item 5.10. This was on consent. It is the final planned unit development permit, and it goes along with the initial that we did, and it's related to the redevelopment agreement that discussed.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Toledo.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn and Hill are absent, Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent. 7.1 passes. Item 7.2, Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a purchase, sale, and development agreement by in-between Ryan Companies, U.S. Inc., and the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. See item 6.1.
A motion to put this before council. Alderman Palomsky, second Alderman Mulliner, Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the next formalized step for the redevelopment agreement, and we suspended the rule so we could approve both the report and the ordinance tonight.
Very good. Additional discussion? Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Toledo.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn and Hill are absent, Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent. 7.2 is adopted. I will add my congratulations to Ryan and to the entire council for all its work in making this project be that much closer to reality, so I thank you. Item 8.1, reports and recommendations of elected and appointed officials. Mayor Levin, I guess I have three announcements. The City of Elmhurst will be hosting a Bike Ride and Safety Day this Sunday, May 22nd, at Wilder Trace Meadow. Bike safety is an important issue in Elmhurst, as we just discussed. It's a great outdoor activity, but accidents can happen without proper safety precautions. So this event consists of a public safety bike team presenting some bicycle safety tips and rules of the road filed by a two-mile bike ride along the prairie path. They will also be conducting bike helmet fittings and quick bike safety checks. There'll also be some giveaways, ice cream, a raffle chance to win a bike and a helmet. You can choose from two sessions, either 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, or 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and registration is required at elmhurst.org/bikesafetyday. You will find that on our website, of course. Next item, we're beginning a new marketing campaign to promote the importance for people to sign up for our Water Smart program. Our program offers residents the ability to actively manage their water usage, and as we move into the summer season, when residents begin outdoor watering, filling up with swimming pools, and using outdoor hoses more frequently, Water Smart is a great asset for our residents to manage their home water usage. Water Smart provides a secure web-based portal with your, with ones, hourly historical water usage, as well as leak notices, and you can also set up water alerts based on your preferences at any time. The service is part of our commitment to provide our residents with the best tools to manage their water use and understand their bills, so for more information in this program, go to elmhurst.org/watersmart to register for those benefits, and I'm sure others besides me have received a notification, a hose is running, something's running, and before you get the $350 excess water bill, you're notified, so I think it's a great program. Last item is our Memorial Day Parade, which is May 30th at 9:30 AM, kicks off right out here at Third and York, and so we haven't been able to do that for a while. Alderman Mulliner has hosted, got the caravan going, but will be live this year, so I hope the aldermen who are in town will join us as we step off, and I hope the residents can participate as we honor our fallen veterans on this day. That is all from me, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items. First, I want to thank and congratulate everybody that put together Museum Day this past weekend. Maybe you had a chance to get out there, the weather wasn't so cooperative, but Dave Olberg, of course, from the History Museum, and John McKinnon from the Art Museum collaborated and put on a great day for those who were able to get out to that. And then, Mayor, you mentioned a couple of events. I want to remind everybody, you can always go to the Explore Elmhurst website for all summer activities, including the trolley, which will be starting up very shortly. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Any other reports and recommendations? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to our lack of a quorum, the Public Works and Building Committee will not be meeting next Monday, May 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Brennan, any other announcements? All right. Item nine, other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? There being none. Item 10 is, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I started it, I might as well finish.
Thank you. Alderman Hanquist, second Alderman Mulliner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? All right, we are adjourned.